I'm gonna stand up.
Stand up, bro.
I won't.
I'm gonna stand up.
Gotta stand up, bro.
I'm gonna just hold him.
Cheer up on the stage. Put the chair up on the stage. Take door.
The NAACP's mission is to achieve equity, political rights, and social inclusion by advancing policies and practices that expand human and civil rights, eliminate discrimination, and accelerate the well-being, education, and economic security of black people and all persons of color. Good evening, and thank you all for joining us tonight for War Three Municipal Runoff Debate here in Rocky Mountain, North Carolina. Give everyone a round of applause. This debate today is presented by the Rocky Mountain NAACP, sponsored by Choice FM 92.1, and hosted by Chief Tabernacle Ministries. Let's give all them a round of applause. Our vote tonight is simple. We would like to provide an open, fair, and informed space for War Three voters to hear directly from their candidates and engage in meaningful conversations tonight. This debate follows nonpartisan, unbiased, and impartial format in full accordance with 501(c)(3) guidelines. Please silence your cell phones and remain respectful throughout the program. There will be no applause or interruptions during responses. At this time, I would like to introduce our moderator for the evening, Mr. Chuck Johnson. Tonight's moderator is Mr. Chuck Johnson, owner of Choice FM 92.1 and one of the most recognizable voices in Rocky Mountain. For decades, Mr. Johnson has used radio as a platform to inform, engage, and give voice to everyday people across eastern North Carolina. Under his leadership, Choice FM has been a consistent convenor of civic dialogue, posting conversations on elections, economic development, youth issues, justice, and community progress. Before leading Choice FM, Mr. Johnson worked in regional broadcast and media management, building relationships with local leaders, faith communities, and grassroots organizers. His reputation for fairness, professionalism, and community trust makes him well-suited to be our moderator for tonight's debate. Please welcome our moderator, Mr. Chuck Johnson.
Thank you. That was incredible. Thank you, NAACP, and also I'd like to thank Bishop Haley Parker, what's it called, Pastor Wanda Frazier-Parker for having us here this evening.
Haley.
I will be spending a lot on this paper tonight. This is quite a bit. We want to make sure that we're fair. We want to make sure that you all get accurate information. And Cooper has done such a phenomenal job putting this together. If we could, please give Cooper a clap. Good evening. So tonight's debate is a head-to-head conversation between the two War Three candidates. And we're here to hear directly from them, no filters, no interruptions. The time limits will be strictly enforced for fairness and bad fairness will be for both candidates. Each candidate is going to have four minutes for an opening statement. As for the questions, each of the questions will be answered by the candidates within nineteen seconds. We are going to allow thirty-second rebuttals, no rebuttals to the rebuttals, and then the rebuttal to the rebuttal. Keep trying to keep moving. If time permits tonight, we're going to allow each candidate to have a two-minute closing statement. Our time given for tonight is Ms. Cindy Meeks. It's Sydney. Oh, there she is up there. All right, so she's up top. Cindy Meeks is the Social Action Chair for the Rocky Mountain NAACP. She's gonna signal each of you, the candidates, when you have fifteen seconds remaining. So if you see a yellow card, I'm sorry, a big yellow piece of paper. Can't miss that. That's gonna give you fifteen, that's gonna let you know that you've got fifteen seconds. What is the red card? Is that to stop? That means your time is up. For the audience, I've already been asked, can we ask questions? The answer to that is yes. Someone whom, someone's gonna be passing out note cards. And those note cards are gonna be provided to everybody to write your questions, and they were going to present your questions to the candidates. And this is gonna be tough. Please remember, no applause, no outbursts, no campaign materials or shirts or buttons and all that, this stuff waving around. We want to keep it fair. We want to keep this evening professional. And with that, let's get very unprofessional. If you want to clap for your candidate and cheer, let's do it right now. All right, now it's time for us to get to getting. War Three City Council, this is important because this is about the direction of this city. This is about where the money goes. This is about the soul of Rocky Mountain. And let me tell you, this city is winning and gonna keep on winning. We have here in front of us Carl Reviss, who for many, many decades I just called Reviss. And we have with us Charles Robertson, whom I just met. Awesome guy, great conversation. So we have a few topics that have been chosen. We're gonna get started. Have we done the coin toss already?
Yeah.
And who won the coin toss? Okay.
Mr. Reviss.
Mr. Reviss.
He's the first. He's the first.
Okay.
He's the first, yeah.
You're first.
Okay. Okay. First question of the evening is, what will you do in the first ninety days to stabilize Rocky Mountain's finances if you are elected?
Good question, good question. First of all, I'd say thank you for allowing me to be here today. Thank you for allowing me to be here today, and thank you for asking me that question. The first ninety days, as in any business, you have to evaluate what's going on. And what I mean by evaluating what's going on, you have to find out what finances are like, what finance you have, and what you're dealing with. So the first ninety days, as I did when I went into business down in Mississippi State, not business, but that police department there, you have to find out exactly what's going on. What finances are, what type of finances do we have? Where those finances have been going? And what can we do to make those finances budgeted correctly? And as administrator, as I've been in Administrative Officers Management Program with NC State University, you have to realize that finances is something that is, you can't take lightly. Therefore, if you don't take the finances lightly, you have to realize where they are going again, how you're gonna finance it, how you're gonna budget it, and what you're gonna do with the budget. You have to talk with the people who are there. You have to make sure you have people who are in place who knows how to finance money correctly, and you have to oversee it. You have to oversee it. So my first ninety days is getting to know the people who are actually in the financing and budgeting department, getting to know the other members of city council, finding out where finances have been given or what finances have been done in the early part, and then actually just doing what I need to do. But you always have to study something before you actually go and make a commitment on what you're doing.
Now, same question to our candidate. What will you do in the first ninety days?
I'll take some time and just access to send prayers to the people of our city. Right now, we're going through a financial crisis, equivalent of a financial tsunami. You know, a hundred people has been let go of their jobs. Those are real people, the real families. So we want to send love and prayers, and that just makes this responsibility even more pressing because our decision is gonna determine a lot. So I would like to answer the question if I could. So I want to thank y'all for giving me the most votes in this election of War Three and putting your trust into me the most votes, now we're in the runoff. But the first ninety days, it's funny you say ninety days because I had ninety days when I went to the city and I begged them for a grant writer, and they gave me a grant writer, and we had to perform within ninety days. In those ninety days, we was able to secure almost a million dollars for this city. So, and that was a grant writer that the city paid twenty-one thousand dollars for, and we got over a four thousand percent return. So in the first ninety days, we have the LGC here now. The Local Government Commission is here now doing an audit. By the time I get in office, I think that should be done, and they're gonna give their recommendations. So we're gonna look over the recommendations of the LGC and figure out what they want us to do and what we're gonna implement. Also, we're gonna look at all unnecessary spending which the city is doing now. We're gonna look at the inventory and assets of the city. What do we own? What properties do we own? What properties shall we sell? What properties shall we repurpose? At the same time, we have to grow our city.
And you have a red card. That's gonna be going over slightly over time. Now, in classic fashion of life, mistakes can be made. And in this case, it is my mistake. I was supposed to allow each candidate two minutes as an opener. And so we're gonna see how well, as we roll back, can you roll with these punches? Let's do an opener, and please, let's rewind the clock and start with your opening statement. And we are also gonna allow that for you.
Thank you, Chuck.
Yeah?
Again, my name is Carl Reviss. Carl Reviss. I grew up about six miles to the east of here, in a little town called Dunbar, Dunbar, North Carolina. Grew up in a one-parent home, had six sisters and brothers, so seven of us saw. And I must graduate from Mississippi State University. I'm sorry, I went to Mississippi State University. I wound up graduating from Charlotte University. And I just want to tell you, I've been married to my wife over thirty years. We've lived in the same community of War Three for over thirty years. I'm a member of Legisipal Fraternity. I'm also, I graduated from NC State University Administrative Officers Management Program. And I just want to say this about War Three. I've been in War Three for thirty-plus years. I love this war, never left it, never left it. I taught, my wife is an educator, I'm an educator. I taught at East Coast Community College for about ten years. I'm, right now, I'm the evening director over at East Coast Community College. And saying that, I understand the needs of the community. I understand what the needs of the people of this community needs, and I love this community. So I'd like to say to each and every one of you tonight, if you think about love of the community, if you think about trust of the community, and you think about being transparent in the community, you're looking at a person. Person never left, a person's gonna do what's right. A person, no matter who it is, if you're doing wrong, if something is wrong, it's gonna be called out. That's my law enforcement background. Again, I want to thank you guys for coming out. I want to thank you for the votes that I got in the runoff. And I guarantee you, if I'm elected, you're looking at a person who's gonna do the right thing at the right time by the right beat. Thank you.
Thank you. Two minutes, Mr. Robertson, your opening statement.
How you doing, El Charles Verb Robertson? I got the name Verb because they said he's so full of action, the name should be a verb. And that's what I've been doing in this city, action. My campaign is action over words, right? You know, it's time for some action in War Three. I think we discussed last time, you know, on Brant Street, on Park Street, I grew up right across from the Bassett School, and I suffered a horrible childhood because we left, we lived in poverty. And I lost my sister, and I barely escaped with my life. But I came back, and we have been working in this ward every, all day, every day for the last few years, rebuilding this ward, investing in this ward with actions you can see, feel, and touch. Providing safer quarterable houses is something that I didn't have. So honor of my grandma, we built twelve apartments in this ward that's housing senior citizens. And I see some seniors that things are on a sign, you know, that's been doing the work. So I thank y'all again for giving me the most votes. And when I get into office, I'm gonna be the man that I've always been every day. My fiancee is sitting here, she's been working youth programs. I've been working, providing safer quarterable houses in this city, and we're gonna continue doing that. So thank you.
Thank you, fantastic. Now, we're gonna go back and continue with the topic of fiscal responsibility and how the city recovers. The question that we have in front of us is, do you support, and this is a tough one, do you support changes in the utility rates? The fee structure? And what is your suggestion for revenue recovery? Why do you support these changes, or why not?
Okay, thank you again, Chuck, good question, good question. Do I support changes in the utility rates? Of course I'm gonna support changes in the utility rates if the utility rates are too high. But as we stated before, it has been stated before here, we know that there's a crisis right now. We gotta find out exactly where the money went, what happened. We have an auditor from the government coming down to look at each and every one of the finances and the things that we have done. I think they're gonna go back to 2010, and they're gonna find out exactly. So yes, I don't want high utility rates. I know seniors here don't want high utility rates. But what can we do about it? We can't do too much until we find out what exactly happened to the money that is missing or has been misappropriated, or what the case may be. And that's gonna be found out through the government, and it's gonna bring it all to us. So I'd like to say this, we know that we've been facing higher taxes in Rocky Mountain. We know that we have been facing high utility bills in Rocky Mountain. And of course, once I get in office, that's got to be examined. But the first thing we need to do is find out what happened to the money that is misappropriated or the money that's missing and the debt that the city is in or has incurred. So I'd like to say, yes, on that question, I do support changes in utilities, but we need to find out what happened to the money before any of this can be addressed.
Thank you. Mr. Robertson, same question. Do you support changes in the utility rates, the fee structures, for recovery here in the city? Why or why not these changes?
So if we're talking about higher utilities, I do not support that at this current time. Why? Because right now, we have a city that's hurting in a financial crisis. And we're not gonna add additional hurt to them by raising our utilities, right? At the last council meeting, we had Matt come in, he has a Bitcoin company, and he pays, I think, close to six hundred thousand dollars a utility bill per month, right? So he came to the council and said, if we increase his bill, then he was leaving. And that's a business that we don't want to lose. So also on the customers, you know, we already had raised in our utilities when the last budget was paid for, right? And also, we had a four percent tax increase. So right now, while we're suffering, we do not want to put more burden and the people, the timing is not right, perception. If we raise the rate now, people's gonna look at that they're paying for the mistakes of the council that the council made. So let's explore all other opportunities. And the things I've been putting on the table is, let's attract more utility customers, right? So if we attract more customers, it won't be just a few of us sharing the cost. It's like if you got a bus and you was going to Atlantic City. If it's just me and you going, we're gonna pay higher. But if we put more people on the bus, that rate goes down. So we have to grow our city and attract more utility customers. How do we do that? I did that by revitalizing houses.
Thank you. Mr. Reviss, how do you suggest that we fill in this gap of monies? We've already identified where the problems are, but how do we fill in that gap?
Well, of course, like I stated before, in order to fill the gap in, you got to know what is needed, okay? Now, we can talk about bringing people into the city, but the city has to be ready for people to be brought into. What I mean by that is, is that we gotta know that we gotta tighten up our belt. We know that. We know that we cannot continue to spend like we were spending, okay? Once we find out what exactly happened with this money, and then we're gonna renegotiate or revisit, and we're gonna find out exactly what we need to do to reduce things. But you can't just say that you're gonna come in and bring more people in to the city because people are not gonna come here if they already thinking that this city always has financial problems. So we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to be smart. We're gonna have to buckle up, we're gonna have to tighten up our belts. We're gonna have to realize that we have an issue, but how do you address issues? Revenues, okay? When revenues come in, you can't over-expand. That's just like using your household, simple math, simple math. But people are not gonna want to come to your house if your house is dilapidated, if your house is dirty. So what we have to do is clean up our mess first, find out what type of situation we're in, and then we'll be able to deal with what we need to deal with. Thank you.
Thirty-second rebuttal.
So I have a record of bringing people to this city. A house was off the tax trail for over thirty years on Brant Street. I brought someone to this city, they cleaned up their house, invested over a hundred fifty thousand now, right next door. We bought it on Brant Street, it's a brand-new house been built. My friend owned a boutique hotel in Miami, in the Black District of Miami. She came to this city, she brought a half a million dollars, and she brought us national press attention. We was in a national magazine because she put a bed in breakfast here. And also, she wanted to put a boutique hotel at the post office box. So I have a record of bringing people to this city.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna keep the topics moving, public safety and crime perception now. I don't know if y'all feel like this, but it just makes me mad when I look on the news and somebody's pointing the finger at Rocky Mountain. And we know it happens a lot. For you, Mr. Reviss, does Rocky Mountain have a crime problem? Or do we have a public perception problem in the city? What will you do on either side of that equation?
If you want to call it public perception, perception is reality. So if you see something, and somebody says it's a perception, to other people, it's something of reality. But I know, I worked in law enforcement, I know that Rocky Mountain, like any other city, is gonna have issues with homicides. They're gonna have issues with drugs. They're gonna have issues, just like any other city, with the problems, okay? But what I can tell you is this, if you get officers, police officers, who trust and really believe in this city, and you get them out there doing their job, you can relieve someone's situation. And how do I say this? It always said, my mom always told me that, everything comes around in a circle. Things go, they come back around. Back in the days, when people got out of their cars, stopped talking to people, officers, got to know who was in their community, got to know the good and the bad, things were a lot better. So what we have to do is make sure that when we are out there patrolling, when you're the boss of that person, or you're that supervisor, you gotta make sure that person get out of the car. You gotta make sure he knows what's happening in the community. People will tell you, when I was out and I had a unit, we could get out and talk to people. And I guarantee you this, most of the homicides, the violent assistance crimes, they were solved. And most of the people who was committing those crimes knew that we were out there and they were not committing crime. By the same token, you go back, you still have to rebuild. You have to rebuild.
Thank you, thank you. Same question, do we have a crime problem or a perception problem? How will you address it?
We have both, but we're not gonna police ourselves to a safer city. That's not gonna happen. I respect police officers. But when I bought Brant Street, on the first day, somebody got shot. That night, they came back and set six of our apartments on fire. We have police, police didn't stop that. We gotta go to the root of the problem, which is poverty. Whenever you see a high concentration of poverty, you're gonna see crime. And police wants to answer, we have safe cities all over this country. But we have to address the real issues and get to the root. And that's gonna be done by create, alleviating poverty. We gotta do wealth building. We need more homeownership in War Three. We need more people owning homes. And Councilman Jordan started in Berkshire, and we're gonna take it to a whole nother level.
What is one, I'm gonna move on. What's one concrete thing that you can tell us that you will do to make War Three feel safer?
So the chief of police, I want y'all all to go to my Facebook page. Already, he praised me for making War Three a section on Brant Street feel safer. Why? Because we invested. We have boots on the ground. This place was ground zero. It was telling me game violence, all of this. We brought the faith-based community. We had the preachers come, they prayed over it. Then we brought a police officer, the games officer, and we backed the Mount Hardest Church, and we did a strategy. But then we invested. Even after that, it was fine. They stole six, they stole nine of my HVAC units, broke my windows. But when they did that, we reinvested in the community. We didn't leave. Now we have seniors here telling me they feel safe, and they want to die there. That's their final destination because we stayed there in the community. We had boots on the ground, ten toes down, and we did the work. So you have to do the work. And when people saw that we did the work, and we wasn't lying, and we wasn't afraid, now you go over there, you look at the product before we took it, and look at the product before, you can call the police department and get these stats. It's changed, and that's the chief of police saying himself that you did a great job here, and you changed this community right now. Then check it out on our Facebook.
All right, concrete ideas. What is a concrete thing that you would do to make citizens here in War Three feel safer?
Yeah, concrete meaning getting out, talking to people. Getting out, talking to people, making sure that people understand what's going on. But I'd like to say something a little different than what he said. The chief of police is gonna tell you that it's fine. The Chief of Police is going to tell you that it's fine because it's an economic problem. Economics does breed, economics do breed crime. But we also know that you can't police yourself out of it, but you also know that police is important. And being able to relate to the community is very important, okay? And you can say, now, I would like to see the numbers because I've been a police officer for numerous of years. And I know that economics does breed crime, it does. But I also know that the people in the community has to feel safe with the police in order for them to do the things they need in the community. You need to see people sitting out on the porch back in the day, they don't do it now. You need to see people, so you need police out there, but you also need other people, the faith-based community, such as Jesse said, good, good actor. But you also need other people who's going to come around and let the people know that they believe in that community. So you asking my concrete idea? My concrete idea is getting out, talking to the people as we do, me and my church family, me and the people that live in the community that I have lived in for thirty years. We get out, we get together, and we go out and we find out the needs of that community. And it's not about building homes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, we're going to keep moving because we know that you all don't have all night. Investment and development. Okay, we're going to move on to that subject now. War Three is War Three. And we would like to know, we'll start with uh Mr. Robertson. How would you approach issues like infrastructure, blight, and the housing conditions in War Three? What is your approach to infrastructure, blight, and investment in infrastructure in War Three?
So where you see a lot of blight, you're going to see a lot of crime, dilapidated houses. You know, we had that on Branch Street. And the Councilman that's here tonight, he helped get rid of one of the dilapidated houses. It was a crack house. People just went in there, did whatever they wanted to do. So we removed blight. Like I said, I brought in someone, I removed blight from Branch Street and changed the community. Now, no one wanted to be over there, it's two brand new houses that's popping up, built from the ground up. My friend removed blight that I brought on the end of that block, and it's a brand new house being built up. People don't want to live around that. So we had to remove blight and infrastructure. The infrastructure, when um Brad Kerr was here, I talked to Brad Kerr about infrastructure. He was going for a ten million dollar grant. We have to revisit that and get a grant. We have a downtown with old infrastructure. But we know we not financially capable of doing that. So there's grants available to build our infrastructure now. Because as we grow the city and get more people, we're going to need our infrastructure to support those, this growth. So I'll say, I'm looking up there, I'll say, yes, we have to get more grants. We have to do more of the work that I've been doing, removing the blight from communities and investing in communities. And we'll be removing the blight that doesn't give, and we have to do more lighting in our community. We have to do a lot more, okay, I'm stopping.
Don't worry about that, I, I got you. Okay, uh, Mr. Rivers, different question, how will you ensure that War Three?
Different question.
Different question, okay, different question, okay. How will you assure that War Three gets equitable investment from the city council as you see in other parts of the city?
You got to start by, what I'm going to do, when I, my first stage in here, is going to set up an advisory council. I'm going not just for War Three particular area, but every section of War Three. You're talking about Copey Road, you're talking about Buck Leonard, you're talking about, we're talking about all these places. So we got to get into everybody on advisory council, and they need to let us know exactly what they need, okay? Once we find out what the need is, then we can be able to deal with things of that nature. But I want, I want to go back to blight a little bit because blight is owners, people who own property, who are not taking care of their property. Blight is people who own property that's not taking care of their property, I'll say it again. There are people who got buildings that they are not taking care of. You ride on the corridors of, when you come in off of South Church Street, you ride on the corridors when you come in off of Raleigh Road, and you see these abandoned buildings, you see, and you ride down the neighborhoods. Some of these people own these buildings that needs to be taken, held accountable for. They need to be held accountable for. So we need to, that's what we need to realize. We can talk about this all day long, but until we decide to put our foot down and hold these people accountable for these blight builders, then we will move on. When you come into a community, you want to see something nice.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, man, we are, we are burning up through time. How are we doing on time for the debate tonight? Okay, you doing well? Okay, because I'm, I'm taking my time. I, I think that we need to get into this, get into the weeds deep. Um, downtown development, I, I do feel like, although I was only supposed to ask two questions per topic, downtown development is something that is significant because we see so many towns and cities really dig in to build their downtowns. Um, I want to ask both of the questions, uh, both of the candidates, what are your thoughts about what Rocky Mountain can do to make its downtown vibrant and even more alive? So Mr. Robertson.
Great. So downtown, I went to the council and I said downtown is the heart of our city, and downtown can feed our city, the fourteen impoverished, underserved communities, right? Thriving downtown. With that being said, we brought Kevin Johnson here. He was a mayor of Sacramento, California. He was also an NBA legend, right? He got a billion dollars for his downtown, right? He was from LeBron James and all that. He walked with us downtown, he told me, he said, Charles, y'all the best kept secret and y'all shouldn't be a secret. Y'all need to get all your, and also I want to tell you this, y'all need to get all your legislators together, and y'all need to go and think bigger, think like you're thinking. When you send this arts district, everybody need to rally around you, y'all need to do this. But y'all need to think bigger and go to Washington and request twenty million dollars a year. And then bring in your private industry and get them to put five million on top of that. So a month ago, we also brought Janet Bryant Howard here. She's the first black woman to start a billion dollar company. And she gave us another blueprint on how we can grow our downtown. So we got to bring the people here that already done the work, and we have to take their advice, and we have to grow our downtown because of thriving downtown, and I worked on it. I was in charge of the downtown stakeholders. And what I did was, we brought them together and we doubled some of our grants for downtown.
Downtown Rocky Mountain, what are your ideas?
Downtown Rocky Mountain has its problems. But if we bring in these people who are from Sacramento, California, Los Angeles, California, then they should help us to be able to realize what's going on. We live here in Rocky Mountain, okay? We live in Rocky Mountain, North Carolina, we live in this small fifty thousand people city. And we have to realize that in order for you to pull yourself out of the situation, what do you have to do? You have to tighten up your bootstraps, you have to do the right thing, and you have to make sure that this city is first. Now, we can talk about celebrities, ask the celebrities to give us two million, three million if they came in. Kevin Johnson, great basketball player, Sacramento, California, loving the town. Did he outspend any money for Rocky Mountain? He gives you ideas, we go anywhere and get ideas, but we have to do things for ourselves. We have to do things for ourselves. Rocky Mountain can be a great city, but yes, we got to get out of the situation we're in, Chuck. We have to get out of the situation we're in, and then we have to realize where we go from there. I'm going to work with every city council member that I can to find out, they have great minds on the city council, okay? They have great minds in other cities where we can talk about. But in order for us to do things, we have to do it ourselves. Thank you.
Thirty seconds.
Janet is from um, Tawboro, she's not a no. And, and she built a billion dollar industry. Those are the type of people that I want around me advising on how to grow our downtown. I grew our downtown by getting a grant into our downtown, and that's factual. And get the people, get the people to invest into our downtown. But no one is going to invest into our downtown until we do it. So we're not expecting him to come bring money, we're not expecting to bring a celebrity and give us ideas. We pay a lot of money for consultants, and he gave us a.
Thank, thank you, okay. This rolls us into the next topic, which is jobs. Because I like to say jobs, 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 because I like some jobs. Business and economic mobility. Um, the question for you, Mr. Rivers, how will you support small business growth and expansion within War Three specifically? And that comes from a small business owner, how will you support me?
I will support it, I will support it, but in order for a person to get a job, they have to have training. And in order for us to have training, there are places that we can get training from. We have OIC that gives people trade development. We have East Coast Community College where I work, where we give people trade development. But again, in order for us to be able to support small businesses, support jobs, we have to be able, we have to be trained, we have to understand what the jobs are. And yes, grants are good for small businesses because we need small businesses in any economy to make sure that the economy stays flourish. But I also have to tell you this, we realize that when we have an economy and we don't have the people to actually do the work that knows how to do work, we really don't have an economy, if you think about it. So get training for these people. Also, think about people who have been arrested, put in jail, coming back out of the prison system, which I've dealt with, and we're going to give them a reentry form type of thing. We're going to help them get jobs, we're going to help them progress. I can tell you a gang member, and I don't want to call his name, but he came out. We sat down with law enforcement, we sat down with no help, we sat down with a group of people, and about two of those people got jobs. We brought them back in, everybody was served a second chance. So what I'm telling you is, in order for us.
Well, thank you. Which reminds me, this is a shameless plug. Choice FM, or is it everybody knows it, Soul Ninety Two? We have a show on the air at ten o'clock PM on Sundays called Sunday Visitation. And it is a show about anti-civilism, trying to bring resources and information to men and women who are in prison, who we don't want to move back and we want to build them up so that they can be productive citizens when they're out. So that's Sunday nights at ten o'clock PM. If you all know anyone that we should interview for that show, please call me and let me know who we can talk to that are helping with that population of people. All right, let's keep it moving. Um, how will you support small business growth, especially specifically in War Three?
Can I talk about the job question I didn't get answered on?
Why don't we?
Okay, cool.
We'll make it a free for all for this question.
Okay, so with jobs, I agree with him, we have a lot of returning citizens in uh War Three. We need customized solutions. And in my plan, the OIC is, is great with workforce training. In my plan, I want all the city contracts to include what I call apprenticeship to ownership. Like on a firehouse, where we just spent, I think eleven, eleven and a half million dollars on there. I don't know if we had, so that we can get people for War Three, returning citizens to work on that and do some apprenticeship on that. Because I tell people, they come up to me all the time, because I'm in the ward with boots on the ground, asking for a job. I employ someone that can work on those um twelve apartments that I talk about. They work with me on those. But when I tell them, when somebody's toilet is backed up, they don't care about your prison record. They care if you can fix it. So these plumbing jobs, electricity, you know, and H- stack. I called some um, um brothers that I know that do H- stack and said, can you take this person on as an apprentice and you mentor them? Because that's what we need, we need customized solutions in our ward. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Now we're going to move on to experience and representation now. Scott, I got to ask, were you ever the jump out boy in the city or writing there?
I don't know what you mean by jump out boy. Did I enforce laws as a drug person? Yes.
All right, well, we, we did some enforcing. With that prior knowledge, experience, what are you going to be bringing to the city council? What does your leadership and experience offer to the city on day one?
Yes, on day one, as I said before, law enforcement alone cannot do, that is very true. But law enforcement is critical, critical in the infrastructure, in the economics, in bringing people, bringing businesses here. So of course we have to go into the communities and we have to make sure that law enforcement is doing their jobs. You can't rush your way out, no. I can tell you this though, I went in with a badge and a gun, and you know what I did? Those people, the elderly who got raped, the elderly who got fraud, okay? We, I made sure I brought justice to them. I made sure I brought justice to them, how did I do that? By arresting the culprit. If someone takes advantage of your elderly and your youth, they need to be arrested, okay? We had people, sisters homicides, sisters homicides. I had to mentor and talk to these young gentlemen, some of them who was committing crimes and some of them just around them. But if you commit the crime, you're going to do the time, simple as that. But I can tell you this, I also went in without my badge and my gun, and I mentored people at the community college in the high schools, in the elementary schools, and they learned. They learned from me. I have a lot of them to tell them, thank you, Mr. Rivers, you saved my life, you saved my son's life, you helped him.
All right, we're, we're going to roll around to some tough questions for uh Mr. Robertson too. Now, being an owner of Choice FM, we get on the air all the time saying, vote, 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 vote. I've gotten half a dozen calls saying that you as a candidate have never voted. Is that true or is that untrue?
I got to laugh at that because my uh opponents put that out there along with a lot of other stuff, like when I go knock on doors and I'm responsible for thirty million dollars, I don't believe in voting, and that um, all sorts of craziness that they're, they're spreading out here. So I was raised as a Jehovah Witness, and my family didn't participate in the voting process, yes. But now, I have first time voters, and if you go on my Facebook, you will see somebody that came all the way two hours away to vote for the first time. Because they've never voted in a city council race because I'm running, they see themselves in me. So I say this to you, when I'm creating a portable housing, they don't ask me for my voter record when someone homeless is moving in or returning citizens. But now we're voting, and we're in full force in this race. And you can tell by, by the people in Rocky Mountain themselves, the low turnout of voters. They do not believe in the process. So we have to, we have to come and bring them back, back. So that's what I'm doing. They see themselves in me, they see somebody that's real, is real, recognize real. And we got first time voters, I go to people's house, they said, I'm not voting, you're only all cooking. Older people, this older gentleman told me the other day, he never voted in his life, and he's like eighty-eight years old.
Yeah, stop, uh, I'm not sure what your answer was.
One too, I said I, I was raised as a Jehovah Witness, and we didn't participate in the process. But I'm no longer a Jehovah Witness, and now we're bringing out people that never voted in their life to participate in the process.
With, with that, how will you bring leadership? And what leadership will you bring to War Three on day one? What experience?
My experience in the leadership is continue what we've done in War Three. That's why the people recognizing, they gave us the most votes because they recognize action over words. They don't care about your voting history, they care about what have you done for us lately? How have you impacted our lives? And that's what we bring to the table. We have impacted people's lives. We impacted the homeless shelter, the homeless shelter could have called any candidate up here. But when they was going through a crisis, the director called Charles Burr Robinson, and we jumped right into action. Immediately I called the news, and guess what happened? We raised the most money in the history of the Breakfast of Champions. That's what you call leadership. A hundred and twenty people in capacity, they could have been out on the street. But we jumped into action, and we started doing the work, just like we doing the work. If you go on Facebook, you will see people that was homeless. I have homeless vets in here right now that didn't have a place to stand up, if you would, that didn't have a place to live. But because of our work, this homeless vet has served the community, is now living in my house for the, what, past twenty-four years? Three years. So that's action. Do you care who voted, who I voted for? No, because we gave them a place to live. And that's what War Three needs. A Vietnam vet, and we have people returning citizens.
Have you ever voted?
I voted over forty-nine times. But I can tell you this, I do wanna respond to that.
Thank you.
When you bring people in, and they could be homeless vets, I like to know what you pay for rent. I like to know how many houses and what people are paying for. And when you talk about, when you talk about going to the homeless shelter, how much money can the city give the homeless shelter? So it wasn't I that did it, it was we, and came out of taxpayers' money, out of our pockets, okay? So we can talk about the things that we do and how we doing, but let's get to the real deal. Let's find the facts of the situation. I can tell you all the time, you can fact check things, things, some things seem to be fact checked, okay? And I respect this man for looking out for the homeless, I respect this man for looking out for the veterans. But there are veterans out there whom are being taken advantage of. There are homeless people out there whom are being taken advantage of. So I say to you, honesty is the best policy, and people love people. Not profit off the people, but love of the people. So I'll tell you again, I got all respect to you, I have no issues with you, but let's be real, let's be honest, when we talk about things of that nature. 'Cause we can get in here and fool people, and if some people are gullible, so if you're gullible, so be it. If you want real, just ask, I'll tell you.
Now, we, we know for a fact that quite often in our political system, people vote not so much for the people, their constituents, they vote down party lines. And so one question that I think is very important on this piece of paper here, uh, is, is this, and I'm gonna just read this one word for word. Um, how will your political affiliation or worldview influence the way that you govern in a local and nonpartisan seat?
Yes, can I rebuttal that?
We started with your, with the question for you, you did answer, let's keep it.
Okay, so my thing is pop. People were popping, people were politics, and people were partying. We put the people first, so it don't matter what party, Democrat, Republican, black, white, green, it's about the people. And we have to put the people first. So how I lead is a people focus. And the people, when you talk about how much people are paying for rent, this is my livelihood and business, right? How much should the city pay for to be a police officer, you did that for free? I don't know, let me know. So it's always people over profits. And I will run with people over price, and that was taxpayer money as well. So we just have to stay focused, and we can't, we can't play each other, workers, I have a lot of respect for the police officer, and he did thirty-two years, and I know he didn't do that for free. So we're not gonna do this for free, but we do provide affordable housing for people. And I have some tenants, other tenants in here right now, that I could have doubled the rent on, and they've been paying the same rent, if you ever go to my Facebook, you will see my tenants telling you how I fixed up the house beautiful, but I didn't displace anyone. And if my tenants don't like standing out, they'd be still in the building, they could stand up and let the people know what the deal is. But yeah, I rule over people.
Again, same question, but read it just word for word. How will your political affiliation or worldview influence the way you govern in a local, nonpartisan seat?
My affiliation politically has nothing to do with it. But we also know that a lot of the impoverished neighborhoods are predominantly people of color. We also know that a lot of the neighborhoods that need the most work is people of color. So therefore, if they're people of color, you have to feel some type of way of trying to help them first, okay? So I'm not talking about being any type of Democrat, or any type of Republican, or things of that nature. I'm talking about working for the people. And the neighborhood that I live in, primarily, I'm just gonna be frank, it's people of color. And as you said, we need to put the people over these politics. So I do not have a particular party that I would be thinking about in a local election. I'm thinking about the people. And that's what we need to think about here, right now. Generally, all the people in this room are people of color. A lot of you live in War Three, so you know what the problems are. So you're not gonna be thinking anything about any type of party. You're thinking about the local elections, you're thinking about what's going on in Rocky Mount right now, you're thinking about the problems that we have, and you're thinking about ways to rectify that problem. Thank you.
Oh, I guess it's my turn, okay, great. As we move on, governing style. Now, we have seen some battles down the street in the city council. Different worldviews, different points, um, sometimes some nasty work. In a, a very highly divided city council in recent years, how will you work with the city, city council, how will you work with the county commissioners, the state, and the feds as the representatives of War Three?
The other night, I got to talk to our congressman, Don Davis, and I said, when the people elect me of War Three, I'm gonna have you on speed dial. Because when G K Butterfield was in office, he brought almost twenty million dollars to Wilson. And we got three million dollars for our progression bridge. It was allocated first, it was reported he was gonna get four million dollars, and then we ended up getting three. So relationships are very important, and I work with, across the aisle, I have worked with our council, current council. You know, and making this city better and impacting the city by getting grants from them. And that was seven members of the council that we work with. I work with council members that's in this room right now. Councilman Blackwell came out to, um, Atlantic Avenue, and he saw what we was doing out there. And Councilman Knight said, you know what? We love it, and he pushed it to invest in it. And their investor created twenty-eight affordable apartments for the city. So we have already worked with the council to impact this city, and we will continue working with them, whoever they shall be, because it's not about personalities, it's about the people. And if I have to work with someone that I disagree with to give money to and resources to War Three, I do it all day, because it's not about me, it's about the people.
All right. How will you work with leaders at the city, county, state, and federal level? How will you work with a somewhat divided city council here in Rocky Mount?
Well, just as he said, I talk with Don Davis as well as G K Butterfield, and I have won speed dial. So I understand how to work with fellow people. But the main thing I'm concerned with right now is what you asked me. Anybody in city council, and they can tell you, some of them who are already there, they know me, they know my reputation, they know how I can bring people together, they know that I'm not a divider. I try to work for what's right. But I can tell you this, my first and foremost priority is gonna be War Three. I can tell you that, and then the city of Rocky Mount. War Three will be my first and foremost priority. I'm gonna make sure, once I get that advisory board together and find out what the people need, what we need in War Three, I'm gonna make sure it's brought before council, and I'm gonna stand up and I'm gonna fight for it, I'm gonna stand up and I'm gonna fight for it. But I'm not a divider. I'm gonna listen, because I'll be the freshman, the freshman councilman. I'm gonna listen, I'm gonna learn, but I'm gonna fight for War Three. And it doesn't take much of a person to realize that if you lived in a place all your life, just about worked in a place, understand that place, then that's gonna be something that you're gonna fight for.
We, we have, we do have one. Yeah, I don't know, you, you wanna go ahead with the audience questions first?
You can finish your question.
Tomorrow, Donald Trump wants to send troops into Rocky Mount, North Carolina, and he has to get the okay from the city council, what's your move?
I don't think that's gonna happen. So anyway, no, we're not sending troops here, you know?
Tomorrow, Donald Trump wants to send troops into Rocky Mount, North Carolina. He's asking for cooperation from law enforcement, what's your answer?
My answer's no also. Quite plain and simple, unless there's something that's really going on in Rocky Mount that we need troops in here, which I don't see, and you know, you're gonna address it with all the other council members, but unless there's something major that's happening in Rocky Mount, none. I don't see any need.
Man, forgive me, Cooper, I had that mistake.
Good question.
Do you want my hell of this? Okay, all right.
Yeah, so one thing, just to clarify, uh, thank you all for submitting the questions. Uh, I'll be coming around again with no cards. I'm gonna shuffle them in front of you, I'll say, you gonna say like, you know, Coop did this question or that question, pass it to the moderator and answer, all right?
All right, each of you have ninety seconds to, uh, answer these questions, I'm ready. Okay. Oh, and no rebuttals? Okay, do you want me to ask one question, a different question?
Both, both can answer.
Both can answer the question, okay. Very good, right here. How would you get the rest of the city council to work with you? And if you had to vote for the other candidate, what is his weak area? And what is his strong area? Who do we start with? I, I think he just answered one question, so again, how would you get the rest of the city council to work with you? Let's go with that.
I think I can answer, the city council have worked with me in the past, so I will continue doing the same thing I'm doing, showing results. How I got the city council to work with me, I invested tons of money into dilapidated places that people shouldn't even be living, a dog probably wouldn't live there. And then I came out and I showed them, and I let them speak to the tenants. And when they spoke to the tenants, they, they saw the work was already in progress, and then they went back and they voted accordingly.
How would you get the city council to work with you?
I told you, I'm not a divider, I bring people together. And the people in city council, the city council sitting in there right now, they know me, they know how I can bring people together. I've never been a person who tried to take over, or say it's a I, I, I thing, it's a weird thing. But as I stated before, War Three is my priority. War Three is what I live and I love, and you're saying, continue to say that because it's true. But me, I work with people on city council all the time also. I don't do houses, I don't things of that nature, but we do projects out in the city. We do projects out in the city. People need something to eat, we try to make sure they have it. During Christmas, we would go out and go to the local, we would go to the local, uh, elderly homes, and we would provide them with meals, sing Christmas carols, things like that. That sounds tricky, but it's not. People who are sitting in that home, who don't have people that's gonna be there for them, they need people like that. And I've done that with, with city council people, and I've done that with my church. So I'm not a divider, I'm pretty much a person that's gonna work with everybody.
What has happened with our timekeeper? I am flipping for my yellow car, my red, we're just, oh, that's done?
Oh, okay.
Okay, man, I thought it was a, was this a thirty second or a ninety second?
We've got a minute and thirty seconds, but we're actually twenty minutes ahead of schedule.
I am so sorry. My apologies. Um, now, do you really want me to ask these other two questions? Okay, um, let me, let me rewind and pop, 'cause you know, working in radio, we have to keep our studio cool, because you know, it's too small in there. So if, if you had to vote for the other, other candidate, what's his weak area?
I don't really know, know him like that. I've really been outside a long time in War Three, and the first time I ever heard about him is now, so. And I've been at the city council meetings for a long time, and advocating for a lot of things, so I just got to be real. I never knew, I never heard his name before, but I was in the hardest hit parts of War Three, so. Uh, I don't really, I can't really say what his weak areas are, because I'm just meeting him now. So, you know, uh, to counsel, I have been to council meetings, budget meetings, advocating for downtown, advocated for a lot of things, but I never heard his name. I've only been back home for nine years, so, in those nine years, I never heard of him, so. I can't answer that question, and that's respectfully, I'm just being honest.
And let's balance it out, and to, what is his strong area?
Um, and he was a police officer for thirty-two years, you have to give respect to that. You know, he served our community for thirty-two years. So what I know about that, I really appreciate and respect that. But now, is we don't, now we need a different set of skills for War Three. We're not gonna police ourselves back to prosperity. You know, we need somebody that knows how to, that have action over words, that's out on the street doing the work, and that can bring money into this community. And I've proven, I brought money into this community as a civilian. And I was out on the streets doing the work with no badge and no gun.
If you had to vote for the other candidate, please let us know what his weak one is.
Well, just as he said, I mean, I know a lot of city councilors in here, and they may have worked with him, but I didn't know anything about Charles Burt Robinson until I put in for, to run for War Three City Council. Then I heard he was running, and I didn't know who he was. So I'm gonna say the same thing about him he said about me, no disrespect to him. I think that he's done well as far as, uh, being a developer, I give him credit for that. But I also realized that, uh, there are more things in developing and building houses for people. You have to know the hearts of people, you have to go to the heart of people, you have to go to the heart of the community. He says he's been out on the streets, and he knows people, he's been in this war. Well, I can guarantee you, if you walk out of, walk out of this building, and walk down Branch or Clark Street, and you walk anywhere and ask who Carl Revis is, I guarantee you that he can tell you who I am, and the things that I've done for families over that neighborhood. So that's what I'm about. I mean, you can, like I say, I don't know too much about him, so I can't say anything bad about him. He's a developer, he say he brings a lot of millions of dollars, so, so be it, I mean, I don't know. But the only thing I can tell you is that facts are facts, fiction is fiction.
So to continue with the questions from the audience. Within the last three years, what have you done in War Three's hardest hit areas? Within the past three years, what have you done in War Three's hardest hit areas?
Well, as I talk about, we did seniors' night at Village, right? We did a village for seniors, that I wanted people to rally around the seniors in the hardest hit areas, and so we can change it. I asked the black men to stand out and let's protect our seniors, right? When I started the momentum of bringing, changing Branch Street, I invited other people to follow, and, and start helping with that progress, right? 'Cause people were saying, you crazy people bringing seniors on Branch Street, it's drugs, it's crime, it's all these things. I said, the seniors alone, man, the crime and drugs don't. So let's rally together and help change that. So we know we have, um, people coming in, like I said, investing in our ward. We have brand new houses popping up in the hardest hit areas of our ward. So we outside doing the work every day. I'm not retired, I'm in the best shape of my life, and we outside fully doing the work. And it's not about me, if it was about me, it would have been my picture on the sign, it would have been my name up there. But it's the seniors' night at Village. A village is, it takes all of us to change the community, not one person. And so that's the way I would lead with a village mentality.
Okay, to repeat the question, do you need to make a question? Okay, within the past three years, what have you done in War Three's hardest hit areas?
Well, I haven't built any houses, I haven't, uh, I haven't, uh, made any grants in. But what I have done is me and my wife and my church, we've been out in the community, serving people, people that are hungry, people need a place to stay. When it was cold at night, we would open up the, uh, we would open up the fellowship hall at the church, allow people to come in, get out of the cold. So those are the things that I do for people. I mean, I don't know how to respond to that question, because we do a lot. I've cut people grass, their grass is old, they call it- I've cut people grass, their grass, old lady called me, or older lady, excuse, excuse me, saying that. An older lady called me, said, Mr. Revis, my grass is high, I need a cut. White can admit to it. I got up, go over to her house, I cut her grass. I asked, is there anything else she need? She needs something to eat, I buy some food. That's what I've done, that's what we do. I mean, like I said, it's nothing major, it's not bringing millions of dollars in, it's not making, breaking thousands of dollars in, but it's making people feel that they're expected, making people feel that they know what they need. Or make a stop by paternity. We do things with kids. We do things, we try to make sure that these kids realize that there are other alternatives out there. And we got a program, which I have.
Well, that, that actually does roll into our next question. Is it, is it okay that we continue with, uh, Mr. Revis? What are your plans for the youth in mitigating violence in our schools and streets? And let's start by just addressing some series. Rocky Mountain, most communities, we have a gang problem. And I would like to know from your experience and from your ideas, how are you gonna help with saving these young people?
We do that through the programs that I, through my church programs, we get them into the programs. But the main thing that you're talking about is, we have to have different organizations. We need mental health involved. We need the police department involved. We need, we need the schools involved. We need to sit down, and it's not, and we need to have people from that community, the gang members, to come in and, and we need to talk to them. That's what we used to do, that's how we do it. And I think, I think like this, we know that anytime that you are not communicating with children or communicating with anybody, nothing's gonna get accomplished. We could sit in a room and we can decide what we wanna do, but if we don't have a person in the room who actually living it at that particular time, then it's counter abusive, that's abusive stuff. So my objective is, is to bring all these community people who have these resources together in a room, along with the people who are living it, the gang members or the drug addicts, or whatever you wanna call it, and we get together, and we're gonna figure out a solution for this thing. And I'd be like you say, you can't do it alone. They use my term, it takes ability to raise people, a child, and that's very much true. But we have to realize that we do have a gang problem, yes, that is true. But in order to get to the root of the problem, we're gonna have to get all these agencies along with people involved together.
How was that your turn? Mr. Robinson, what are your plans for the youth and violence in our communities and our schools? And again, we have to address the fact that Rocky Mountain has a gang issue similar to other areas. What is your plan for violence in young?
I said this before, we have to, um, empower the people with boots on the ground, it's already doing the work. Right now, I have Ed in here, he brought one of the youth, the other day, he brought like ten up. He brought like twenty of the youth. He's been mentoring the youth in this ward forever. I have my fiancee here. She's ten years, she's celebrating your queens. And your queens, she empowers the youth and teach the kids from young that we came, our DNA is from kings and queens. Right? She celebrated ten years of doing that, she did a fashion show, was beautiful. We had from four years old to eighty-six years old walk in the runway. Damn, yes, yes. So we already have programs, we have Rise of Kings and Queens, and we did a whole summer camp at AME Church. Free summer camp, free, um, food, everything. So it's like, these people already know they touching the youth. They already been doing this for years with little to no money, because they love it, out of their passion. So now, when we come in, we get a dedicated grant writer, we gotta empower them and help them build capacity. And that's what we're about. We're about action over words. We can talk about the youth, the things they're promising, we already doing.
And I gave him an extra ninety seconds earlier. I think this, this question is specifically for you. Um, in the state of the city, the monies you acquired, would you be willing to return grant monies to help the city's finances?
Return grant monies, that's someone that doesn't understand, right? You, y'all don't understand this. Grants is just a lighter fluid, right? I already had a fire, that's just like a fire digger. So grant money was, when the city gave us eighty-five thousand dollars for sixteen apartments, and we promised that we'd keep five of those apartments affordable. That was a smart investment. So anybody that don't understand business, grants are given all over this city. And the city's youth's grants to start to light the flame. So the city got a grant returning investment for the grant money. How? We created affordable housing. We have a senior citizen that his, um, his father, in a room ninety-two years old, I created a apartment with granite countertops, same steel appliances. Beautiful, he's paying under six hundred dollars a month for that. Where you gonna get that out in this city? So the city made very smart investments with grant money. Are you gonna tell Elon Musk to give him back the money President Obama gave him? Huh? Y'all, y'all talking about peanuts, and y'all, people that don't understand what it takes to create affordable housing, that another thing to work, let me explain it to you. Banks without land. When I bought those sixteen apartments, I told the story on my Facebook, it was no loan that.
Man, you got red card. I'm a little unsure of this question, maybe whoever wrote it, uh, is it okay that we invite somebody to the mic? Uh, the question for each candidate is, are you willing to learn the duties of the council? Um, whoever, if, if you don't want to explain that question further, that's fine. Um, are you willing to learn the duties of the council? Are you willing to learn the duties of the council?
I'm gonna go day one, look at the school of government, government, that teach the duties, the laws, and the orders of a councilperson. You know, that's a free course that they get. But I would see how councils operate, because I've been at a lot of council meetings, a lot of budget meetings. This is what I do, I love it. And the council members in this room can tell you that I've been present at a lot of them. If I'm not present there, I'm only looking at them on Zoom, on the city website, on YouTube, Facebook. So yeah, I will be willing, everything I do, I wanna be the best at it, and I wanna, um, learn the most I can about it. So yes, I'll go to the school of government and, and learn as much as I can about the, um, the laws and regulations of council.
Mr. Moderator? I didn't wanna say anything, but that was my question, but I want them to answer it first.
Okay.
But the main thing is, a lot of people don't know the duties, and so they be misleading folks. So that's why I asked that question.
Okay.
Thank you.
So at this point, um, and if the head of the NAACP is all right, we're going to go ahead and start wrapping up. Now, when we started, each candidate should have had two minutes. But we're gonna give each candidate a two-minute opportunity to close, the same way that we started with Mr. Revis. Two minutes, please.
Yes, first of all, I thank you all for being out here tonight. It's, it was very invigorating to me to see the people that come out who were very interested in knowing what the candidates are about. But I can tell you this, in my closing, I love this war, always have. I'm gonna do the right thing about this war. Uh, some people say I went into law enforcement and all I did was arrest people. Okay, gun and badge. But I took that gun and the badge, and I turned it over to education, and I turned it over to loving the children, love mentoring the children, loving my war, living it, not leaving it. I am the type of person who, regardless of the organization, regardless of who you are, I'm the type of person who's gonna be honest, transparent, and let you know exactly what's going on. I'm not the type of person that's gonna sit up here and tell you something wrong, okay? And we just talked about, will I learn the government? I know some of the government, but I don't know it all. So there's a learning experience for everyone. But just remember, Carl Revis, when you go out to vote on November the fourth, and early voting's already started, just remember, you want somebody honest, you want somebody that's gonna talk to you straight up and not try to run any type of games, then I'm the person you need to vote for. Thank you.
Mr. Robinson, two minutes.
Thank you all for standing through this. If you want action over words, then it's her, D E R to the D. So I just wanna say, um, you want a visionary leader. When times got hard, you could see during COVID, what did we do? We started Downtown Cares, right? If anybody don't know about it, go to our Facebook. What that did, we bought from the downtown businesses that were struggling restaurants, and we took care packages to senior citizens, right? And when that care packages included masks, hand sanitizers, and food, we took them to the seniors around here, right? That's what you want in a leader, when, when things get hard, think about out-of-the-box solutions. That was a win, it was a win for the businesses. Some businesses had just started downtown, and they had to close their doors. So we bought from them when the time was tough. But outside of that, I'm asking all of y'all, if you want someone that's already done the work, not tell you a whole bunch of promises, that work that you become see, touch, and feel, and not a bunch of lies that they're spreading on social media, don't get caught in it anytime, I'm an open book. I teach people how to do what I did, because I worked from being homeless to providing over fifty housing units in this city, and that's God. All praises to God who allows us to see that my family never owned anything. I'm first generation, and I want other people to know what I did and follow the blueprints of what I've done. And it's not about me, because I teach anyone that wanna learn this thing. Yep. So that's what it is, so you watch, and I'm here with Miss Mary Warren, has been serving this community for over forty years. And she gave my support, and she's wearing my T-shirt, and I'm so proud of that. And I, like I said, I didn't put myself on the sign, I put her on the signs, and people like her. So the action show is not about me, it's about us.
Fantastic, that's your two, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, for their courage, for their courage and their commitment to War Three, please put your hands together for these hard-won candidates. See, we, we do have a couple of announcements, please do not leave. Uh, a few very important things, um, that we need to discuss, we have Ms. Sidney Meacham.
Thank you. Uh, before we conclude, we wanna make sure that every eligible voter in War Three has information needed to participate in, um, the election runoff. So early voting is happening now, if you didn't know, now you know. Um, I'm gonna start with Edgecombe County. You can vote at the Edgecombe County Administrative Building, uh, Harman Auditorium, two-on St. Andrew Street, Tarboro, North Carolina, um, from eight AM to five PM, and then on Saturday, November first, eight AM to three PM. And then starting October the twenty-seventh, you can vote at the, um, Rocky Mountain Department of Social Services, three oh one South Fairby Road, from eleven AM to five PM, and Saturday, November first, eight AM to three PM. If you live in Nash County, you can vote now at the Board of Elections Office, um, at eight AM to five PM. Well, obviously, you all know them, so, thank you all for being a great voter. And if you need the information, just come to me directly. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming, and thank you to Troop Tavern and Alcohol for hosting us, Mr. Peyton Woodpark and Co-Pastor. Y'all be safe tonight. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, I keep saying it, Mr. Johnson.